All right, everybody ready up here? Looks like. Roger, you ready? All right, if we got everything going over there electronically. So with that, it's six o'clock. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting of the Edgefield County Council to order. Thank everybody for being here. It's July the 5th. I'm glad to see we've got a full house. And so appreciate everybody being here. We'll start with the invocation by Pastor Aaron Tripp of First Baptist Church of Edgefield, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
Father, we thank you. Lord, for this wonderful nation, we thank you for coming up on 250 years of freedom. Father, we thank you for all the many ways you have blessed this nation. Well, we thank you for this representative government you've given us. Father, we thank you for these men and women who are serving in these various capacities. We pray that this evening you would give them wisdom and insight. Father, that we would treat one another with kindness and respect. And, oh, Lord, we honor those who have taken these positions of authority that you've granted to them. And, Lord, we just ask that you would show us the wisest way forward in all these different circumstances that come before us. Well, we know that you have a plan and that according to Ephesians 2:10, you've already laid out the steps, God. We just ask for wisdom that we would walk in them. Oh, we thank you that Jesus died on the cross for our sins and we thank you for the privilege of gathering many different faiths and traditions in this country. But, Lord, we thank you that we can come and pray and we thank you for the opportunity to gather in your name, my friend. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Please join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. All right, we will start now with the approval of the agenda. I have no changes to offer anybody. Does anybody have any changes we need to make to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Talbot makes the motion. Mr. Cooper seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. We only have one set of minutes to approve. That's the May 3rd, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Any questions or comments from council along the minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
All right, Ms. Ireland makes the motions. There's a second. Dr. Kenyon seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. There's no guest speaker tonight. We're up to public comments. Did anybody sign up for the public comment session, first one?
No.
Okay. So council, nobody signed up, so we will close the first public comment section and move into reports. Counsel, any questions or comments on the reports? Okay, hearing none, we move to the consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to come off the consent agenda? Hearing nothing, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cooper makes the motion. There's a second.
Second.
And Ms. Ireland seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, council, is our public hearing. This is the consideration of approval. This is for, well, it's a public hearing, ordinance number 2122785, authorizing Edgefield County, South Carolina, to enter into a base lease and conveyance agreement, an installment purchase and use agreement each between the county and the Edgefield County Public Facilities Corporation, approving the form in terms of a trust agreement between the Edgefield County Public Facilities Corporation and Regions Bank as trustee in connection with the issuance of not exceeding $32 million principal amount of certain installment purchase revenue bonds, Edgefield County project, in one or more series consenting to the issuance of such installment purchase revenue bonds, approving the form of a preliminary official statement with respect to such installment purchase revenue bonds, delegating authority to the chair of the county council and the interim county administrator or either of them acting alone to approve and determine certain matters and other matters relating hereto. So that is the public hearing tonight. Is anyone here? I'll open up the public hearing. Is anyone here to speak on that issue? Mr. Pedigree.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one question. Uh, I recall reading in the media that the state had awarded in the budget this year with the plutonium settlement funds, I believe it was $18 million, to Edgefield County for the law enforcement center. And that was wonderful news. That will save the taxpayers of the county, $18 million, and let the plutonium settlement funds pay for that. So glad to see that. So my question is, how much do you anticipate borrowing now with this bond? Thirty-two million or so? I know that minus 18 million? Or where are we now on the amount of the bond that we anticipate?
Knowing that we have an audience here and we have over here, I'll ask the question. Is this simple math, 18 minus 32, or is there something more complicated?
No, it's not complicated. We already have 10 million set aside with the capital project sales tax. We'll need approximately another $10 million additionally. So the bond would be for 20 million plus or minus, depending what the final price is when we get the bids in.
Okay, and do we have, along the same track, do we have now a firm bid amount for the law enforcement center? Or is that still in negotiation and being, uh?
We do not.
We do not?
It has not gone up for bid yet.
You've got, I guess, an engineer architect's estimate?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So if I heard you right, instead of $32 million roughly bond, we now looking at around 20?
Yeah, we never felt we would get to 32 million, but we wanted to have extra there just in case.
Yeah, and with inflation and things going up, you don't. Okay, all right, very good. That's all I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak at the public hearing on this issue? Okay, hearing none, council, I'm going to close the public hearing and move to old business. The first item of old business is consideration of approval of second reading of ordinance number 2122784, revising the purchasing code of section 2-370, local bid preference. We discussed this in a little bit of detail last time. I'll just ask the administrator if there's anything else we need to know about this tonight?
No changes since last time.
Counsel, any comments or questions about this ordinance? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve or, I guess, should we give second reading to ordinance number 2122784?
So moved.
Mr. Talbot makes the motion. There's a second.
Second.
Ms. Ireland seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Number two under old business, I'm not going to read it again. It's exactly what I just read in the, as the title for the public hearing. So again, we've talked about this a lot and we've had a lot of discussion on this, particularly last time too. But I'll ask before we have second reading of it, if the administrator has anything else we need to know about this item.
Tonight, we have Franny Heiser here from Burr Foreman, who has put together this package. You will see under exhibit two, you have several inches. I'm sure you read that thoroughly. Normally, I would not put the attachments in there and we will not have the attachments in for the third reading. But I just wanted you to see all the various forms and applications and other things that have to be signed by our secretary with the nonprofit board that we have. So it's a very complicated process, but her firm has been through this on numerous occasions, has a wealth of knowledge, and I'll let Franny make any comments that she would like to make at this time.
Thank you all for letting me join you all tonight. I'm glad to be here. This is exciting. I mean, people don't usually get excited about detention centers. But I've been doing this long enough. At the beginning of my bond career, about 30 years ago, people were building detention centers. And now, 30 years later, people are having to build new detention centers. And so we appreciate the opportunity to work with you all on this. As Mr. Duke said, this is a complicated transaction. There are a lot of moving pieces in it. Mr. Marine has actually read all these documents and he was giving me some notes on them and we will follow up. And I know that y'all have gone over this, but if you'd like me briefly to maybe go through that caption you read and mention what each of those items means, because there's a specific purpose for each of those phrases in this big title to the ordinance. The ordinance itself is not that long and it will be in final form when you give it third reading, I guess, in August. The attachments are actually forms of document, because there will be details of this transaction still to work out between now and the time the bonds are sold and now and the time the bonds are actually closed. So that's why these are in a form and not in final for the exhibits. So the first step in this process is that y'all already have created a nonprofit corporation, the Edgefield County Public Facilities Corporation. They've met twice, they are fully incorporated, they've elected officers, and they are ready to be of assistance to the county in this process. And so the first document that starts the process is that y'all own the property upon which the detention center will be constructed. And you're going to lease that property to the nonprofit corporation. You're going to lease it for a period of twice the length of the bond. So if the bonds are 20-year bonds, the lease is going to be at least 40 years. The nonprofit, and then you will enter into an installment purchase and use agreement between the county and the nonprofit. Pursuant to that agreement, you tell the corporation, if y'all borrow the 20 million, whatever it ends up exactly being, if y'all borrow the funds we need for this project on our behalf, we will pay you annual payments that are installment purchase payments, where we basically will buy the facility back from you. And so that's why it's called installment purchase revenue bonds. You are making installment payments where you acquire pro rata ownership of the property. Your agreement is subject to annual appropriation, which means that technically you, the county council and future councils, would have a right every budget year, every fiscal year, to decide to fund or not fund the payments pursuant to the installment contract. We have, we've been doing transactions like this in South Carolina for at least 30 years. We've never had a non-payment. We've never had a non-appropriation, because if you non-appropriate, you lose the use of the portion of the facility you have not paid for. And so that could be, would be very catastrophic in terms of an essential facility like a detention center. It also would pretty much ruin your credit rating. And so that's not unique here in Edgefield, that's statewide. And so the marketplace is very comfortable with this type of financing, even with that annual appropriation clause. Because the transaction has annual appropriation, it does not count against your 8% constitutional debt limit. And y'all are very conservative about how you use your 8% debt limit, but you wouldn't have enough 8% debt limit to pay for the portion of the facility that's not going to be paid from the other funds, what you've already collected in front of the plutonium settlement. So once the lease has been entered into and the installment purchase contract has been entered into, the corporation enters into a contract with Regions Bank as trustee. And in that document, the corporation says, here's everything we have an interest in. We are giving over to, for behalf of the bondholders, all of our right titled interests in the base lease and the installment purchase revenue bond. And that is really a major part of the security for the bondholders. The corporation then issues the not exceed 32 and obviously it'll be less than that. We would not borrow more than you need. And so I'm comfortable leaving that number because it does give you some flexibility. The, so the bonds are issued. You, county council, in this ordinance, you will actually consent to the issuance of these bonds. That's required by the IRS. The nonprofit corporation that you created is on behalf of issuer. It's issuing tax exempt debt on y'all's behalf. And so you have to consent to the issuance of that debt. And so that's in the ordinance. In order to market the bonds and sell them, we will have to prepare and distribute a preliminary official statement. That is like the prospectus, that you do have a form of that here in these attachments. We ask you to delegate to your chair and to the administrator the ability to make certain decisions. You know, for example, how much will be borrowed? What will the exact payment terms be? When will the sale be held? Those are some of the types of decisions that still have to be made. And then we have to have the final versions of all these documents. So nothing of substance will change, but details, you know, what the marketplace may require, rating agency may want something. And so we need to have that flexibility to work on the documents that are exhibits to this ordinance. So that's sort of a rundown of what's all in this package. And I wish we could go paperless, it would save trees, but we certainly will be able to. I don't think y'all will need these at your third reading. If there are any questions, they're certainly available digitally. I'm glad to answer any questions on my tab.
Questions from council?
Thank you.
Thank you for doing all this.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it. Look forward to working with you.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, just a couple of things to follow up on what she just stated. This nonprofit corporation, which we were talking about, public facilities, the reason we titled it that versus the law enforcement nonprofit board is this nonprofit board, or facsimile thereof, could go ahead and if we wanted to build a new recreational site with fields and a gym and it's going to cost us 15, 20 million, again, it's already set up and in place for us to do something very similar in the future. And I just have to, and I wrote this all out so I could be concise tonight, but there's been some information that has been put out on the website that I think is misinformation. And it's caused some confusion and angst with a number of citizens. So I just want to go through an update of, not the detention facility, we now call it the law enforcement center. It's a nice title. Now, after a lot of phone calls and letters from you and the state legislature, they voted to approve the $18 million for law enforcement center. About a week ago, the governor signed the budget and our funding was not vetoed from him. So we do have the $18 million. Therefore, between the 10 million that we currently have with the capital project sales tax, which was approved by referendum and by the voters, and 18 million from the plutonium settlement, we will only need about 10 million from CPST 2. So there will be a second CPST, which will be on the ballot in 2024. This time, though, the referendum question will be for the law enforcement center and any other needed county projects. And the total project sales tax estimate would be over $22 million. So this time was 10 million, next time will be about 22, of which we'll need about 10 for the law enforcement center. And the rest, you could start thinking, because we'll start having to put together a list of where and how do you want to spend this money, in other words, going to the voters at that time. Ron and Wiki has been posting, however, information that she felt concerned the increased size of the project and making it sound like this is the first time we discussed having a combined center. In 2020, Mosley Architects stated the project would be 40,000 feet, square feet, with an office for the magistrate to work out of for sentencing. Or the center could be a full magistrate, staffing and courtroom, all the sheriff's offices, evidence rooms, storage and jail combined, totaling 66,000 square feet. So they gave us two options in March of 2020. In the summer of 2020, the former administrator began to refer to the facility as a combined center. So through discussions with you, the sheriff and others, we started moving towards the combined center instead of the 40,000. Since I came back to work in April of 2021, we discussed on a monthly basis that we wanted to combine the offices and the courtroom with the jail. In June of 2021, we requested proposals from architectural firms to design a 66,000 square foot facility. So that was the first time we actually, in writing, said, we want to design this thing. And the county committee recommended Mosley Architects. And at your August 2021 meeting, or 11 months ago, we recommended Mosley Architects and you signed or approved a contract to design a combined 66,500 square foot facility and we named it the law enforcement center. So we had our first official vote ratifying, moving forward with the 66,000 square foot facility in August of 2021. Up until that time, we discussed it, we talked about it, but this was your first official vote. So since that time, and again, all these meetings have been in public as we've discussed this on a monthly basis. The county committee named it the law enforcement center. And late last year, when the police, when the price increased to 38 million, we discussed the possibility that maybe we'd have to step back to a jail only. We didn't vote on anything, we just discussed it. I brought this to your attention. However, we then learned that plutonium settlement would provide the need of funding to allow us to build a total law enforcement center. When completed, and I think this is really important, when completed, this will be a facility that will serve our needs for the next 20 years and something the citizens could be very proud of. So it's being built to have some expansion involved. The current magistrate does not currently have a courtroom. Many times, he'll have cases in his office and his standing room only. This will allow him to have that courtroom, allow us to have that evidence room that we right now have evidence scattered in several different locations. It'll truly be something that you and the citizens will be very proud of. And so I believe that you've taken step after step after step in the right direction, announcing the size of this facility on numerous occasions. So I don't know where that misinformation came from, but I wanted to set the record straight in our meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. All right, council, questions or comments from any of us? Hearing none, then I assume you're ready to vote. Is there a motion to give second reading to ordinance number 2122785?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cooper makes the motion. There's a second. And Dr. Kenyon, I think, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, council, we move to new business. And the first item is the consideration of approval of first reading of ordinance number 2122786 in ordinance to rezone certain properties located in Edgefield County. So I'll ask the administrator or the assistant administrator for any details.
I'll let the assistant handle this.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So basically, y'all are just correcting an error that I made on the map. This is a parcel that's a long highway 25 that should have been general commercial like all the rest of them. But the parcel's really long and whenever I was zoning the parcels behind it, I caught that one too. Obviously, there's 20,000 parcels in Edgefield County, so I wasn't zoomed down to the level of going parcel by parcel. So this was an error on my part and I'm just correcting the map.
So there's no citizen request for this? We just need to get it changed? Because everything else around it, because everything else around it is what you see?
Correct, yes. So how this came up is, it's a church. It's a commercial building. It used to, it was probably originally a video poker place. And then, of course, that became illegal. Church purchased it. And they called and just wondered why they were residential. And so I looked up their property and noticed, oh, well, you're not supposed to be. It's supposed to be commercial. So I filed the application under the planning commission and went through the process as the county so that they would not in the future need to do so.
Questions or comments from council?
Doc, I would like to say we truly thank you for updating us and apologize for the mistake. We know that we all make mistakes and so we definitely appreciate you correcting it.
Thank you.
You're human. Oh, my gosh, Doc, really?
Well, I don't want to be the one to tell you, but there's probably a lot more mistakes on that map.
I'm glad you, I'm glad you did come forward and you owned it and you're setting it straight. And thank you so much for doing that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to give first reading to ordinance number 2122786?
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Ireland makes the motion and Mr. Talbot seconds. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, under new business is consideration of approval of resolution number 21221149. This is, as you had read in the bold print, something we've been doing for 20 years, just the two county agreement on the convenience center located near the McCormick County line. I'll ask the administrator if there's anything else we need to know about it. Okay, council, any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve resolution number 21221149?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Talbot makes the motion. There's a second.
Second.
And Ms. Ireland seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, under new business is consideration of approval of extending the HVAC contract with Cullum Services, Inc. So I'll ask the administrator if he wants to talk about this one.
This is, again, a continuation of a longstanding contract we've had with them.
So we must be satisfied with their work?
We are very satisfied.
Questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there a motion to extending the contract with Cullum Services for another year?
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Talbot makes the motion. There's a second.
Second.
Ms. Ireland seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is the consideration of authorization for the county council chair to sign a memorandum of understanding with the South Carolina Works Center. Again, I'll ask the administrator if he wants to give us any details on this one.
Again, this is a longstanding agreement we have with the workforce, where they list the jobs and work with the counties to help find employment for individuals.
Questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the authorization to sign this memorandum of understanding again?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Mr. Cooper makes the motion. There's a second. Dr. Kenyon, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Takes us to public comment period number two. Do we have any people signed up for number two?
No one's signed up.
Okay, council, then we will close public comment section number two and move to the administrator's report.
Thank you, sir. I wanted to talk to you briefly concerning the Barton Road storm drainage. This is something that's been plaguing that area for the last several decades. We have come up with a couple of different options. Doc and I met with the citizens this afternoon and we're going back to the drawing board for a third time to see if we could find a solution that could satisfy as many of the citizens out there as possible. The biggest impediment that we have is some form of detention or retention pond is needed. Detention is where you detain the water for a period of time and eventually it's all released. A retention is the water's retained and it could only percolate or evaporate in that pond. No matter what solution we arrive at, we need to acquire property. And there's a phrase called nimby, not in my backyard. And so everybody wants this out there, but none of them want it in their backyard. So we're relooking at this again and hopefully we'll come up with a solution that'll satisfy the vast majority of the residents that are out there. But they, the good news is they know we're concerned, we're working on it and we're trying to develop something that will meet the needs of all of them. There's been a couple of emails going back and forth concerning the Sweetwater Community Center. What a great asset this is to the county and to its residents. Unfortunately, our current policy does not allow us to rent it during the week and only once on the weekends. And as Aretha will tell you, she gets numerous requests, especially on weekends. Now, during the week, we don't get that many requests, but on weekends, we could double book, triple book this on a number of occasions. So what we'd like to do is to determine a solution to open this up so it could be rented on a more consistent basis. so it could be rented on a more consistent basis. With your permission, we will go ahead and look for someone that could clean the facility. So if it's rented on a Friday night, that individual would come on Saturday morning, spend that one to two hours cleaning it. Rented on Saturday night, they'd come Sunday morning for one or two hours. We had probably put a flat rate, uh, of saying, let's just say fifty dollars to clean it each time, whether it takes you one hour, it takes you three hours. And we believe that this will make a much better use for the facility. So, uh, if we have your permission, we're going to go ahead and make that policy change. That will also mean that whatever staff is using it during the week, they will have to book it just like other residents will be having to book it. So I'm not too sure why we had those kind of policy in place, but we're going to go ahead and Aretha and I have talked about it and we feel we have a great plan forward. And as we get more details, uh, we will let council know. Road user fee, as you probably all know, the state did approve the ability for the counties to enact a road user fee, uh, starting July one. At the September meeting, we generally will set a milage rate for this next year's taxes. The commitment that I believe council made was if the state approves the road user fee, we will go ahead and reduce our taxes accordingly. Uh, I believe it was increased by eight point two mils. So this fall, when Bill Gilchrist comes here, he'll be presenting, uh, milage rate, or not a rate, but the number of mils going from the eighty-nine point something back to eighty-two point something. So I just wanted to let you know that is the plan. I've already talked to Bill and that's the direction we'll be going. We've had some discussions in the past about the contractual agreement we have with the different fire departments throughout the county. There's seven fire departments, three with the towns, four are independent. One of those requirements was for the county to do an annual audit of the expenses and the revenue in each of the fire departments. When this was brought to my attention, uh, it appears that we have not done that on a regular basis. It's been a hit and miss basis. In your reports, there are the four audits that we have for Merriweather, Westside, Northside and County Line. It will show the amount of revenue they're, they're receiving, the amount of expenditures and the amount that they have in reserve to help them throughout the year. Uh, so that has been completed, we've met our obligation. The three towns have always done an audit and their audit is internal with the other departments they have within those communities. So that is in your reports, if you'd like to see it, if you have any questions, please let me know. Last of all, I just wanted to state that in the budget, you had set aside a hundred and ten thousand dollars for litter control for the county. Uh, this provides about four thousand hours of pickup plus any necessary items associated with that pickup, bags, vests, trailers, vehicles, et cetera. Uh, I met with Jim Dorn with his senior center and asked if he would work with us on finding potential partners or employees, just like at the convenience centers, to do some of this work. Because this is not going to be a, let's hire someone forty hours a week and go out there and pick up litter. Uh, literally, there's days that are raining, there's days that are just so hot and if you're going to pick up later for eight hours in a day, uh, you know, you're talking ten, fifteen, twenty, I mean, you just physically would not be able to do that. So we see this more as part-time work or, as Jim Dorn and I discussed, maybe we can get some nonprofits, some churches, some other organizations that would like to go ahead on a regular basis. This is probably monthly, taking not necessarily in front of their church, but certain roads within the county and ask them to go ahead and be assigned to picking up the litter on those roads. And then we would go ahead and pay them a certain stipend, uh, to do that. A lot of these churches, Sunday school classes, nonprofits are always looking at ways, maybe it's a boy scout group or some other group that's out there that says, well, that sounds great, we'll pay them ten dollars a mile or fifteen dollars a mile, but we'll come up with a rate to pay them, give them the bags, give them the vest, give them the little picker-uppers and let them go ahead and do this. We could even put a sign out there saying, helping to keep Edgefield County clean. But the more people get involved, the more people could see the visibility of what we're doing, I think the less litter we're going to see. Because then it becomes a joint effort, not just the county picking up this litter, but getting citizens involved in this process. So that's the direction we're going to take. If you have some comments, some thoughts on it, uh, Doc and I have been talking about it. There's, unfortunately, you always have to think of what about the liability, what about this, what about that? So we'll be looking at those, the what ifs, uh, but we want to go ahead and make this a successful program, but most of all, get that litter off our streets. If you have any questions, comments, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Any questions or comments from council on his, his report? Thank you very much. And we'll, we'll, uh, go to my comments then, I, I have, uh, I think it's three or four things here. First, um, I mentioned last month that we'd put out a news release to see if there was citizen interest in starting a local chapter of the South Carolina African American Heritage Commission. Uh, I want the council to know that I met last week with a small group of citizens who are very interested. We'll have another meeting of these citizens, um, and we'll invite others to a July twenty-sixth meeting right here in the council chambers at five thirty P M. The state organization's going to send its director to speak to the group at night and I believe this organizational meeting will launch, will be the launch of this new citizen-driven commission. So please let me know later if any council members would like to attend the July twenty-sixth meeting. Also, council, I want to report, uh, to you that last month I'd visited with, uh, one other existing industry, um, here and, uh, those executives, while they didn't want to release any details yet, they are moving forward with a major expansion in our county by adding more employees, adding significantly more square footage and equipment. And this will be the second Edgefield County industry to tell me in the past two months that they're going to do this. I'm grateful to them and the jobs they provide to our citizens. It's worth noting that most new jobs created come from existing industries. So I want to ensure we work with them to enhance our citizens' quality of life. Next, I, I want to recognize our vice chairman, Albert Talbert. Mr. Talbert, uh, if you didn't know, was just elected by his peers to serve as the chairman of the Upper Savannah Council of Government Board of Directors. His two-year term began a few days ago and runs until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So congratulations to him and it's good to know we'll have somebody who can now look out for Edgefield County's interest on that board in a more direct way. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Finally, I want to announce that our August county council meeting date is changing. Our meeting is currently scheduled for the first Tuesday in August, which is August the second. However, we have two council members attending the Association of Counties annual meeting that week, so we're moving our meeting to a week later, August ninth. So to repeat, the next meeting will be right here, six P M, August ninth. And that's all I have, being with there no other business on the agenda, I'd certainly entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Talbert makes the motions, they're second.
Second.
And Ms. Ireland seconds, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
What? Have we talked about this early?